...Tucson County Sports and Tourism Authority. I volunteer with over thirty organizations here in Tucson, everything from businesses to, for the last nine years, I've been the volunteer executive director of a group called Stand Up For Kids. We go out on the streets and help the homeless teens and street kids, the most vulnerable homeless population. In 2009, I ran for city council because I was heartbroken. I was heartbroken at what I had seen happen to our city, and I continue to be. And now, I guess I've kind of gone from being heartbroken to just being angry. I know Tucson can do better. I don't think I have to tell you some of the issues we're facing here. I don't think you have to tell you. All you have to do is go outside and look around, look at the streets, look at how we've taken a very, very beautiful place and allowed it to become very ugly. Ward Three, and again, it's kind of interesting that the two candidates actually bothered to show up here tonight. In a city with the sixth poorest, sixth highest poverty rate in the country, the two candidates have bothered to actually show up here tonight and represent the two wards that are most afflicted with poverty. Ward Three has got the highest domestic violence rate, we've got the highest property crime rate, we've got one of the lowest median incomes in the whole city, and forty percent of the public housing, the subsidized housing in the entire city of Tucson is in Ward Three. I know we can do better, but before you can start on the path of fixing things, you've got to recognize where it's wrong. And I proposed to the incumbent, say, "Eight years to do the job, and it's not getting better." So, I would like your vote. I'm going to remind you, it's a citywide election. It's essential that every Tucsonan who lives in the city limits, you can vote, does vote this election. Thank you.
All right, all right, get started. My opponent canceled at the last minute, we got another empty chair. That's about all he is. My name is Mike Pollock, and I am running for Tucson City Council for Ward Five. Like Ben, we see the same things out there, the roads are down, damaged, they're not going to fix. But like you, you know, I want my family to have a good life here. I want them to prosper, I want our businesses to prosper, because our businesses here are the ones who produce and create and make things happen and sell their goods. They keep Tucson alive. And I see a lack of our production and manufacturing jobs. We don't have high-paying jobs here any longer. It's one of the things I'd like to bring back and work with. That's one of my goals. And my history in work, I've been in the aerospace industry for over twenty years, got a degree in computer science, I also have a degree in electronic engineering. I've worked for the Boeing Company, Northrop, McDonnell Douglas, and Sea Launch Boeing, where we supported satellite launch missions. I've been around the world, I've worked with a lot of different cultures and people, which has given me a good understanding of how I have to do business with people from vast diverse areas, I mean, in business. So, I think we can do better for our city, I believe I can make some better decisions. And like Ben said, this is a citywide election, and we need to get the word out there and start making things happen. But I've been a resident here for five years, I've been coming, my mom lives here, so I've been coming out for more than twenty-five, so I do have a history here in Tucson as well. Thank you.
So, we are going to encourage questions from the audience, and then we'll let them speak also, so.
I've heard that Hughes is transferring some of their production to Alabama or South Carolina or someplace else. Have you heard anything about that?
Raytheon?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Yes, back in 2010, Raytheon wanted to expand here, and they were unable to expand. And what they did is they bought property in Huntsville, Alabama, which is right down the street from the Boeing Company, because Boeing has a huge facility for their rocket manufacturing in Huntsville. Very big. And they have been sending people there on a regular basis. Just a few months ago, they hired over a hundred people at Raytheon here and shipped them all off to Alabama. Even when you go on their site, most of the jobs there state that this job will be moved to Huntsville, Alabama in 2013. Now, to me, that's writing on the wall. I don't know how stable that's going to be, because Raytheon in California and El Segundo was closed as well, because Raytheon has bought property there. And when anytime a company starts shipping jobs out of town, that means they're reducing in size. I know they do have contracts for this facility that are coming up, but a lot of that has not been disclosed of how much is going to stay here. And I wish we knew that, but that's something we would have to get into with the economic development team once we get elected and get in there and find out what their true motives are.
Mr. Fimbres sent me a postcard, and he said he's created 1,100 jobs in Ward Five alone. Where?
He hasn't created any jobs at all. Matter of fact, the city council doesn't create jobs. We have to create the environment, and they've chased more jobs out of town, like GCU, that's one of the biggest ones. Twenty-four hundred construction jobs, a hundred million dollars in paid wages, and after that, construction was done, that would have been about a three- to five-year build project, that's not a small deal. But the city council didn't look at the extending jobs to home manufacturing or building apartments for students, and that would have brought more revenue in. And then you have the loss of the thousand to two thousand permanent jobs for the staff, that would have been at GCU. So, we lost 4,400 jobs there. And then if you look at like the F-35, again, same thing. But in Ward Five, he's only created part-time, minimum-wage jobs, and most of the people that live in our neighborhoods are working two to three jobs just to survive, because our hours are being cut. There's not very much going on here. And I don't see it. He's sent out a press release a while back, and that press release only counted maybe about 207 jobs that he created. That's much different, because everything that's on that postcard is the same thing that's on his website, telling you about how he created those jobs. He didn't create those jobs. Walmart and Costco, those businesses were already in negotiation coming here back in 2006. So, they were already planning on coming here before he was even in office.
Karen, if I could add to that, in 2005, the city of Tucson hired me to write a master development plan for that very neighborhood, the K-136. And one of the key recommendations to come out of that plan was the residents of that area did not have proper access to basic services like grocery shopping. So, I wrote the plan that recommended, excuse me, that needed a grocery store. It just so happened that grocery store that went in there was Walmart, and Karen Willick was the only council member to vote against that Walmart, even though the council member of that area and the resident of that area wanted that business. You look, you talk about probably almost half of the revenues that go into the city's general fund, trump of sales taxes, of Bradshaw's Walmart, the Costco, or the San job, forgive me, that did not happen, that's 1.5 billion dollars there alone. So, I wrote the plan, designed the plan that recommended it to be built down there, and she voted against the Walmart at that point.
Why doesn't she like Walmart?
My guess is because of the union issue. That's my guess. But the point is, you know, you're looking to represent all the voters of the city of Tucson. And I've used this line before, and I know you guys hate it, but I hate cheese Danish. But I'm not going to vote against a bakery, just because I don't like cheese Danish. You're there to represent the citizens of Tucson, and when most of your revenue comes from sales taxes, you know, yeah, we don't want to put fifteen big box stores in Tucson, but there's thirty million dollars in sales tax revenue. So, you need to step outside of that and do what's best for all the residents of the city of Tucson.
I need to learn more about this, but I understand that I'm the same ballot if we're going to be voting for the city plan. I'm kind of a...
Right, yeah, that's a plant in Tucson.
Yeah, there you go. What do you know about it, and...
Well, yeah, it's really up to you. That's what I do. I do community economic development planning. Any project that's going to work is going to work because of leadership. And the general plan is supposed to provide a broad perspective of the overall goals that the city as a whole has to reach. My concern about the general plan is that process felt pretty to have so often happened recently in Tucson, and that special interest went in there to start adding their local team there and dislocating. So, instead of a broad general plan, we have kind of a broad general plan, but a lot of specifics relating to this and nothing related to that. For example, the issue of Davis-Monthan Air Force Base and the 1.6 billion dollars that that provides to the local revenue every year was initially not addressed in the plan until folks stepped up and said, "Hey, if you're going to put that in there, you need to put this in there." So, unfortunately, it's not the best product available, but it is going to be on the balance of the voter. You need to read it and decide which way you need to go.
I don't believe that it has the economic growth that we should have in there. It seemed like there was more restrictions in the plan than anything else, that it could hurt the city more than it would be good.
It's going to be a pretty vanilla election. That's why it's even more important for all of you to get down and cast your ballots. I have to tell you, I'm very concerned. I voted in the primary election. I'm one of those people, I'd like to go down and actually cast my ballot, because I'm doing my job as an American. So, eight o'clock on election day, my girlfriend and I went down and cast our ballots in Ward Three. At nine thirty the next day, I received a voice message on my cellphone saying, "You need to call us back by five o'clock, we can't verify your signature. If you don't call us back, your ballot don't count." Now, if you get beyond the fact that the guy who you're calling is the guy whose name is actually on the ballot, and the whole thing of Mr. Mueller Garcia, did you vote for Ben Mueller Garcia? But what concerned me was, I said, "Well, what signature?" Well, the signature we have on record is from 1994. Well, my signature's probably changed. Imagine if you had a stroke. I mean, all of our signatures have changed since 1994. But I asked, "What percentage of this, how often does this happen?" She said probably about 2% of the ballots. Now, in 2009, there were seventy-four thousand ballots cast in my list. You take 2% of that, I don't do math in public, but that's about fourteen hundred votes. I lost by 175 votes. I'll leave it at that.
I've got a question. Tell us about the potential of Davis-Monthan Air Force Base and the loss of the A-10.
Well, clearly, the A-10 is, the aircraft is self slated to be phased out eventually. Now, if it was up to me, if I was king for a day, I'd open up the lines of Bill Murray Kennedy. They're one of the few tools that our Defense Department's ever designed that actually does what it's supposed to do. Having said that, you know, again, as I mentioned, that's 1.6 billion dollars a year. That's not just that what happens on base, the construction, when we're having a hard time here in Tucson, about the only construction that was taking place is out there on the base. They really lifted those jobs here in Tucson. We've got about 3,000 civilian jobs, 104,000 direct jobs out in the community. So, when you talk about coming out, there's probably marsheds right there on Cracker Rock, just outside the front gate. All they do is sew patches and promotions on the uniform, they've probably got six or seven employees. That's a direct small business impact by Davis-Monthan Air Force Base. Davis-Monthan was on the first closure list, I was part of the team that designed the strategy that not only kept Davis-Monthan off the closure list, but identified other missions around the country of other bases that are going to be closed, and said, "Hey, that'd be a good mission to bring to Tucson." That's how we built the twelve air force headquarters here in Tucson. Some of your mayor may not know this, but the highest ranking officer in the entire state of Arizona lays his head out of Davis-Monthan Air Force Base. He's in charge of thirteen units in the US and everything south of Mexico. That's a head for this country responsible for 65,000 employees. So, my concern is, we rested on our laurels. We have not been aggressive enough in supporting that base. And that ward has gotten back to Washington. And I believe with the four major bases in the state of Arizona, if the Brax or whatever you want to call them this time, come down the line, we're the weakest. And it's because we haven't had the leadership. I mean, ask the incumbent, what position is on Davis-Monthan Air Force Base? I've been working out there to support this thing for twenty-five years. She showed up last month to go lunch.
Yeah, he's right, that base is essential. Being a Marine, I've seen those planes in action, and that's one of the best combat infantry support aircraft that you can get, that can fly in and do the job. We've got to fight for that base, because he's right, the city council's leadership did not fight, they did not fight for the F-35, they didn't fight to support it. I mean, we, if that base closes, we have a potential to lose billions in revenue and thousands of jobs, and it will impact, as I have seen it firsthand. Being from California, I saw a naval base close with a naval hospital and devastated the city of Long Beach, and they're just now starting to recover after twenty-plus years.
Again, by land and mic, it goes even beyond that. The skirt part is one of the advantages that Davis-Monthan has is AMAR. That was something you probably called the bowling yard, Aircraft Management and Generation Center. It is highly unlikely they could find a place somewhere in the US to clog down 4,000 planes. So, the reality is, worst-case situation, they close DM, they've got to keep AMAR open and the support facilities open. Now, people, I've heard people say, "Oh, well, don't worry about it, they'll never close Davis-Monthan Air Force Base." Well, tell that and ask the former mayor of Mesa what he or she thought about Williams Air Force Base. Now, Williams, they've done a wonderful job of converting that base, but if they close Davis-Monthan, we won't have all those advantages, because they'll have to remain that military mission out there to support AMAR. So, we won't even have a clean slate to work with. The mayor and council of this city need to be aggressive and unequivocal in their support for that Air Force Base.
I'm all for saving a few bucks, but the mayor and council has been enacting resolutions with an emergency clause repeatedly and aggressively. This is in order to circumvent the rules, so that they don't have to give public notice and public comment and so forth. But yet, the people are not getting to provide their input in these resolutions because of the emergency clause and no public comment being allowed at the mayor and council meeting. The media seems not to care at all, it's been brought up. There was one op-ed in the Arizona Daily Star a couple of months from a woman complaining about it. If elected, what will you do to stop this practice? Because most of these resolutions aren't emergencies.
Yeah, the older folks in the club will recognize this phrase, it depends on what is is. I guess it depends on what an emergency is. And Ken, I think that's one of those things that I don't disagree with you on. You know, some kind, sometimes in order, if it's something that is not what we would define as an emergency, but it's something that needs to move forward, you get off the table as you move on, I can see the appropriateness of using that phraseology. I would want to take a hard look at, I mean, I still understand if it's something that requires public comment, there's still a public comment, or there should be at least a public hearing on it, before you make that final vote declaring it an emergency. At the end of the day, is that one of those big things, if you don't put the emergency clause on there and let it go into effect thirty days, forty-five days, whatever it needs to be, I don't see a big difference there. So, in general, I would support just not adding that emergency clause unless it's truly an emergency. Or if it's something that had to be implemented rather, for example, you know, a resolution or some sort of action with Davis-Monthan Air Force Base, you could vote on it and let it actually take effect in forty-five days, but it'd probably be good to actually have it take effect when you do it.
And another thing on that too, when you do that, is just putting a bandaid on a problem versus actually fixing it at one time. And when you have issues, you want to take a look at it, make sure it's done right the first time. You don't want to have to keep addressing it over and over and over again, and that's kind of how they're getting away with that, they just keep kicking the can down the road, and that's why we're the problems we're having right now.
Cans been kicked down the road so much, it's an old hassle.
The cans cause the potholes.
Tucson's flytrails are in El Paso now, too.
I have a question. Did you still have a question?
It's a relative, what's going on there?
Have you ever heard of a group, and I love this name, Forward Tucson?
Tucson Forward.
Tucson Forward?
Yes, ma'am.
It asks me, like, it wants to go backwards. Because aren't they in favor of stopping everything, shutting everything down?
Ostensibly, their position is that they're reformed to resist the F-35 coming to train here in Tucson. Now, you know, keep in mind, the F-35 mission was slated, or the mission that we're currently talking about was slated to go to the Air Guard, the 162nd National Air Guard at Tucson International Airport. So, a lot of folks are confused about what's a DM mission and what's an Air Guard mission. So, ostensibly, that is their mission, but if you get down the leads and talk to them, some of them really, all they want is to just shut down the Air Force Base. And I've got to tell you, my neighbor association, I live at Bay Bronx North of U of A, my home was built in 1930, and sometimes I go to my neighbor association meetings, and there's residents that just stand up and say, "Those darn students, that darn U of A." And you almost want to say, you know, anybody who had their home in 1884, you get to complain. The rest of us knew what was there when we moved in. I actually appreciate the university being there when I moved in. And it's kind of the same thing with Davis-Monthan Air Force Base, but again, with my experience, let me add one more caveat, here's what I see happening. Eventually, if you have an Air Force Base more than likely, you have to have a flying mission. Now, Jessica showed up on that video and then made it in the newspaper, let me clarify, I spent the last six months visiting other communities with Air Force bases and talking to their civilian groups to see what they're doing to support Davis-Monthan. You don't necessarily have to have a flight mission, have an Air Force Base. Having said that, the F-35 is slated to replace both the A-10 and the F-16 eventually. If we want a flying mission in an Air Force Base, there will be F-35s more than likely to disguise of Tucson. We need to get over that and just work to do it, we can't do it fixing. My big fear is, what we were really in competition for was to be the training base for the F-35, and we lost that mission up to an Air Force Base. The 162nd is an international guard unit, that's really technically a state unit. So, and their specialty is training our foreign partners. Eventually, some, most of our foreign partners, maybe some of them will be converting from F-16s to F-35s. My fear is eventually someone is going to say, "Wait a minute, we're training the F-35s to loop. Our foreign partners are converting the F-35s, but they can't fly them in Tucson." And eventually, we might lose the 162nd, and those jobs may even not get impacted to loop aircraft for space in Phoenix. Now, keep in mind, those are reservists, those are citizen airmen, those are people who live in our community full-time, and those jobs might get lost to go to Air Force Base somewhere down the line.
All right, they want to work on the budget and fade out aircraft, and then after they do that, they want to spend six billion on combat helicopters. Why, have we ever needed helicopters in Tucson, combat helicopters? Why, what's the idea of the budget in the first place? If they want to spend six billion after the budget?
Short answer is yes. Just within the last, I want to say, twelve to sixteen months, the sheriff's rescue helicopter went down on a mission up here in the Catalina Mountains, and the PJs, the air rescuers from Davis-Monthan Air Force Base from the 943, had to be dispatched in a combat helicopter to rescue those folks that went down in that sheriff's department helicopter crash. So, on occasion, you see the airmen out there at Davis-Monthan Air Force Base, whether they're with the 943, the 55, or the rescue group, and ladies and gentlemen, these guys are the best they are. These are fabulous people. But on occasion, they do serve a civilian role. When I went to visit the unit in Moffett Airfield in San Jose several months ago, the commander was apologizing, because he wanted to take me up in a helicopter, but it turns out that when I arrived, they were gearing up to deploy to help rescue missions of Hurricane Rita. And of course, I'm like, "No, I get to actually see you guys do what you're doing." So, yeah, they need the best equipment, because when a helicopter goes down, it doesn't go down in compartments, the whole thing is...
It's an essential mission, because the border patrol also in customs sometimes will actually utilize military out there to help them with surveillance as well and rescues for people out in the desert as well, for agents that get hurt. They've been out there too, rescuing when they're healing, can't get out, and they're down, so they utilize the PJs out there for borders.
Now, I want to be clear, when they go up on a mission like that, they're not armed. I mean, it's hard to say, don't think of 50 cal or something.
Well, we're combat use in there, you know, if it's just a rescue, okay, you're combat surgeon rescue. Surgeon rescue.
What can we do, we as individuals do to help support Davis-Monthan and protect them from Boeing? I know we can't count on our city council right now.
Yeah, we need to start showing up to meetings, start yelling and screaming louder than the...
At the city council meetings, or where?
Yeah, because when I, I've been to the city council meetings, and one of the things I see, the people that always get their way are the ones that, are the not in my backyard, the anti-business, anti-growth people, and there's nobody there to support anything going on. When I went there for the liquor license for Walmart, when they had that board there, there was nobody there to support Walmart except Walmart. And everybody kept saying, "Oh, Walmart creates crime, and they create all this crime in the area, we don't want them here." And it's like, well, they don't realize that Walmart's not creating the crime, it's the low, the poverty rates and the lack of jobs here in Tucson. And I blame the city council for chasing businesses away, and they were holding up that liquor license which held that store from opening. And it just, it just snowballs. But as Tucson citizens, we've got to come together and start saying, "No, we need to change the way we do business. We've got to come together as a community to do that, otherwise it will never happen, and this town is going to be nonexistent of jobs, it's going to be void of jobs except for part-time and minimum wage."
Just, I second what Mike said, now, let me expand on that a little bit. If you look over the past several years in Tucson, part of my frustration, part of my heartbreak, is because of the lack of courageous leadership. We have become a city where a couple dozen people have shut down any project. Grand Canyon University is not a perfect example, but it's a similar example. Tucson Forward is another example. I don't know how many total people are involved in Tucson Forward, but I'd be willing to bet it's far short of the list of supporters on the Minuteman website that supports the 162nd. So, you need to write letters, you need to get engaged. Ladies and gentlemen, that's what this election is all about. We are talking about poverty, we're talking about potholes. You know, we're talking about, as I mentioned before, we've taken a beautiful place and allowed it to get ugly. You as the voters need to step up and take your city back. I'm here because I care about the community, I'm running for city council. Mike is here because he cares about communities, so he's running for city council. Karen and Richard are paid. This is their job to be here tonight, and they're not here. You need to spread that message to your friends and neighbors. Look, look at this strictly as an employee relationship. It's been eight years in the case of Karen. Is the job getting done? And I've proposed to you, it's not.
It's not getting done.
Joe Miller, it's hard. Why are your wards that you're running for so strict on poverty? It seems like those, the boundaries of your wards are where the poverty is getting worse all the time. Why is that?
Well, I'll tell you mine first off. I got one statistic here, and you guys are just going to hit the floor, your jaw's going to drop to the floor. The number of children that are eligible for our free introduced school lunches right now is eighty-five percent in Ward Five. Eighty-five percent, and that's up through 2012. That's embarrassing. You know, same thing with the public assistance. Twenty-three percent of the population in Ward Five are on public assistance and food stamps. And then the child poverty rate is 42%, and just overall poverty for the ward is 31%. And if you look at all of Tucson, it's 26%. I mean, we should be embarrassed as a city, but again, I blame that on the city council. Richard Fimbres has been anti-business, anti-growth, anti-taxpayer. They have pushed jobs out of town, they have chased jobs out. El Paradis was open for forty years, they've closed. I have never seen so many small businesses close in the last four years. It's abysmal. But that has to do with the fees, the regulations, it puts these people out of business. So, people that have small businesses can't afford the fees that the city charges. They can't afford to deal with the regulations, so they close. So, these people have nothing else to go on. So, they're forced to go into that, having to get the assistance, because there's no jobs for them. So, between Grand Canyon University and even Rosemont Copper, I mean, people need these jobs. They need them, and they're not, they don't care about the citizens of Tucson, they only care about their seat.
By the way, restaurant, El Masam de Cobre, which is on Ward Three closed, if you saw the paper yesterday. El Masam de Cobre, how's that? Restaurants have been there, I think, forty years, but right in Ward Three, another one. Let me rephrase a little bit what Mike said. The lane, lay with all of us in this room? Yeah, the mayor and council haven't made... Honestly, I don't know, sometimes it's bad decisions, but more often than not, it's not making any decision. And, you know, one of the things I've learned from spending so much time with the military is a lot of times you've got to make a decision. It may not be the right one, but if you don't make a decision, people can die. Now, we're not in that situation here in Tucson, but really, the sixth poorest city in the country, we've got a top-ten research university here. You know, a critical part of the Mars lander mission, it wasn't run out of Florida or Houston, it was run out of the U of A, right there. We do, there's a country fifty miles south of us that does 400 billion dollars in trade with us every year, and we're not taking advantage of that. When I was running international trade programs with Tucson, I promised we were recognized as the best international trade program in the entire state. So, it's lack of courage, it's lack of good decision-making, it's lack of experience and attitude. And just to follow up on what Mike said, Grand Canyon University, and we're getting debates about whether they're going to come here or not. As an economic development professional with twenty years of experience, I have spent time in boardrooms with CEOs trying to recruit companies to Tucson. And I'll tell you, the backside of that really concerns me. Obviously, we should have, I would have loved to have Grand Canyon University, but the backside of that is CEOs and site selectors around the country, when they're looking to go to a city, they read the papers too, and they read just what Mike was saying. Here you've got Rosemont Copper, a company that has met, exceeded all the rules. The only company in Southern Arizona that's committed to replace 105% of the water they pumped out. Let me say that again, the only company that's doing that. Good jobs, 2,000 jobs averaging $60,000 a year, and Karen Willick in 2007, before anything was known about the mine, before the plan of operations, what the mitigation was, any before the plan of operations, what the mitigation was, any of that stuff, led to charges in opposition to the mine. And that is still unrighted. People see that. They see Grand Canyon University, they see that a couple of folks have shut a project down, even scarier with that. And this is not the city council, this is, this is us Tucsoners. But when someone cements a agreement, an information request, to get details of negotiations that really should be, should be kept quiet. Imagine, I was involved when Raytheon was consolidating out of Luntre, people longer and running the jobs in Tucson. Imagine if the word had gotten out in Southern California to those plants and those communities that Raytheon was moving the jobs here before Raytheon was ready for that to ever get out? It would hurt us. And that's our problem. We've become the city that can't get things done. It's because lack of experience, it's lack of leadership, and it's lack of creativity.
And trust.
And trust. We have got the tools here to make Tucson better. We're not a Detroit. We don't have to Detroit, Detroit. That, that dying is not being cast. But it's going to take people with experience and, like I said, courage to get it done. And every once in a while, you're going to have a vote, that, you're going to have, you're going to have to make a decision that might cost you votes, but you've got to make that decision. And if you don't get elected, fine, you don't get elected, but the roads are fixed. Short answer to your question about how we get the roads fixed, we have an election every year. Because if you notice, the first for election, the roads started to fit. You know, if you notice in two thousand nine, thirty days before the election, the mayor and council all got together and declared themselves business friendly. Do you want to know what not business friendly is? Not business friendly is my client who goes out there and builds the pad for his houses and gets an inch and a half line approved, pours the pad, puts a plumb in. Inspector comes up and says, look, that should be a two-inch line, but you approved an inch and a half line. I'm the inspector, fix it, promise you it's done. Okay? Picks up the pad, replaces it with a two-inch line. Next inspector comes up, why do you have a two-inch line in the ground when the plan we approve for you says inch and a half? Well, because the last, I don't care, you take it out and you meet the plan. There you go, start over. That costs money, that costs time. The, the tourathon that I got a little bit flack about because one of the business people on there is Joe Higgins. Well, yes, Joe Higgins has strong opinions, he has a radio show, but guess what? Joe Higgins is a very successful entrepreneur. He has one business on Ward Three, he's closing down because they keep, he keeps getting burglarized, his trucks keep getting analyzed, and they keep ripping up his business. He's shutting down, most people are out of work. He's got a second business that's extremely successful, so successful, he has to expand it. He's not only expanding the city of Tucson, he's been expanding Oro Valley. Because he knows in Oro Valley that if he calls the cops, the cops won't be able to show up. He knows in Oro Valley, his, his, his employees aren't going to hit a ploco, it's going to cost him fourteen hundred dollars. His attitude. Attitude, don't get me started.
Gentlemen, I know that you are, that this is a good, a CYD election. Howard, can you briefly tell us what your boundaries are in your, in your wards, physical boundaries?
Yeah, my boundaries actually run all the way down Valencia, up through Benson Highway, they kind of jog around the military base, up to Twenty Second Swan, down about Twelfth and Sixth Street, and then back down to Valencia.
My ballpark are the River Road, River Road is city limits on the north, on over west I-ten, a little bit west of I-ten, kind of Columbus on the, the east of practical. All Grand Canyon University was never going to come here. And by the way, if the ward, a council member doesn't want it, then the rest of us just kind of roll over and play it down. That's not what winning cities do. So from the thirty thousand pool level, we need to take care of what we've got here and at least stop the bleeding. Make sure we keep Raytheon here and growing. Make sure the small businesses remain healthy and continue going. Exploit, and I use that word wisely, exploit the resource that we've got going for us, the U of A, tourism, the mine. We're surrounded, we produce, what, seventy percent of copper in the entire United States is produced out of Southern Arizona. It can be done correctly, and I believe Rosemont is actually going to set a brand-new standard to do that. But beyond that, with the technology that Rosemont is using, with the Italian training site that Catop has got south of Tucson, with the expanding of the mining and copper operations throughout Arizona, with one of the best copper engineering, mining engineering schools in the entire city, Arizona. I believe, my vision is you push for, beyond that, we become the world headquarters for training and technology when it comes to mining. If you want to build a mine anywhere in the world, you've got to send that person here to Tucson, train on it, and start building it timely and rapidly. So that's, that's number one. But mainly, now getting down into some specifics, the example I gave you with my client. I would really push for a portfolio management system down in Developmental Services. My bank does it, my car dealer does it. When I start a conversation, that same person will launch me through the process. Assign that inspector to maintain the process, that's an easy fix. In two thousand nine, I proposed some language for something I called the Safe Harbor Ordinance. And I've seen this in other cities where I work. When you do a major transportation plan like we've got with the RTA along Grand Road to Broadway, those commercial properties along there, because they're unsure, instability is the main thing a lot of bits are looking for, because they're unsure what's going to happen. If that tenant moves out or something happens with that building, a lot of times it'll remain vacant because the next business doesn't want to move in there because they know what's going to happen. It might be a change of use, there's all these sort of things they have to go through. They're not going to make that investment without they don't maintain the property for years. What a Safe Harbor Ordinance would do would be in those transportation quarters, basically to say, you know, for lack of, and this is a very new design version, but unless it's health and safety related, if you move in that business, you can maintain it the way it is and continue making money and paying taxes until it actually take you to fix your ...
TUSD has closed so many schools. What are, you know, is there anything you can do for the schools? And I'm sure we spend a lot of money on maintenance.
Let me finish, because that, that's related to what I'm saying, so let me finish this. So I proposed that in two thousand nine, after the election appearance, that's a good idea, let me push it. It disappeared, it died quietly. Well, guess what? We're thirty days from election, guess what's coming up again? The Safe Harbor Ordinance. Coming back to the 401K, as far as the industries, I think, as I mentioned before, I think we really do have an advantage in the U of A, and we should do, focus on those industries. Logistics. Logistics is, shows the highest growth, potential growth rate for new jobs in, in the, the entire country with an average salary of seventy thousand dollars a year. We're fifty miles from a national board that needs logistics, we should be focusing on that supporting it. Coming down to your last question, you know, the pension thing is not going to be on the budget, it looks like, they're not going to make it in time. But the big picture I ask is why now, for a third time, do the voters have to step up and try and put something on the budget because the mayor and council aren't doing their job? The pension fund this time. Last year was the, the bonds for the, to fix the roads. And two thousand nine, it was Prop Two Hundred, which might not have been the best proposal in the world, but the citizens were standing up saying, look, you guys aren't doing your job, so we're going to put on the ballot to try and do the job for you, and that's no way to run a government. You need folks down there willing to make a decision and do a job. So then, coming back to your question, as city council members, we've got absolutely nothing to do with Tucson any further school district. Having said that, what we can do is create a healthy environment where you don't have forty-five percent of the kids who parents only have one job going to school hungry. Because we do have good jobs and a healthy environment, a healthy tax base that helps the schools. As a city council member, I've got nothing to say about you.
About unused schools, you have nothing to say about that?
Well, the final decision with TUSD, what I'd like to see, in fact, in Jefferson Park where I live, they did close that school, you know, and I'd love to see that, that school converted either to a, a higher-end residential project. There's a school just down the street from me that was converted, I want to say in the nineteen eighties, to a, to an apartment complex, and they did a wonderful job. They maintained the historic interior of the building, it's a great, and it's being used rather than being vacant. So as city council members, if that's something that, you know, we didn't acquire that property and we don't have the money, the city's broke. Until we get more business in there and start grabbing more revenue, I don't know where that might even come from. We need to focus on the basics, public safety, using our roads and parks. Getting back to the basics, you've got to use your experience before you have reserve.
Hi, I'm just wondering, earlier you mentioned Rose, the mines, Rose Copper Mine. And words, we, I'd like to know where you think that we stand in getting that mine brought here?
Well, you go, you go ahead, I'll back.
Well, one, one of the problems I see right now, I, I know they're still working on their final processes, but the city council is still holding up the vote on the water connection for Sarita. Sarita's on the look for the water, not Tucson. There should be no reason why the city of Tucson should hold up another two thousand jobs. That's how our leadership is. They do not want jobs here. It's obvious. When they hold up something that's small to hire that many people, they, they, they don't care. It's obvious.
With, just in, in, in just a complete openness, Rosemont Copper's been a client of mine for thirty-eight months. I've been blessed in that for sixteen years I've been self-employed, and I've never been the kind of guy that takes a client I have philosophical differences with. I'm pretty good at what I do, but if I don't like where you want to go, if the pressure you want to take it, hire somebody else, I'm not your guy. I spent four hours, one hour each with each of the top leadership people at Rosemont Copper before I decided to take this job precisely because I want to be convinced myself that they really are going to do it differently. That they really were committed to making this a state-of-the-art, a different mine than what our grandfathers saw. So I've worked with them for the last thirty-eight months, helping to train small business people to take those jobs as subcontractors, working with the workforce development system to make sure we've got a workforce that's prepared to take those jobs. And just this morning, I'm also helping on the logistics plan for the mine. The average, in general in the mining industry, the average job with a high school diploma is sixty thousand dollars a year. The average salary with a college diploma is a hundred thousand dollars a year. Rosemont's going to bring in four hundred and fifty of those jobs to Southern Arizona. Now, I smile when you ask the question because sometimes when you do tours, people say, well, why can't you put the mine somewhere else? Well, because you kind of sort of have to mine the ore where it is. That's a simple question. But again, I, I just, I look beyond that. Now, I believe, well, I don't believe, the Forest Service and their, and they're the controlling agency for this, they made it very clear from day one in the public hearings that the no alternative option, alternative was not an alternative. The option of not building the mine, the Forest Service does not have the authority to stop this mine. It's just a question of what they want Rosemont to do and what the plan will look like. So I believe that the mine will happen. I believe it will be one of the best mines, will be the best mine in, in North America. I believe those are good jobs, I believe they're actually committed to the process. I've seen it happen, I've worked with them to hold their feet and fire to make it happen. But you as a young person, you need to think about that. The, the director of the College of Engineering, of Mining Engineering said, because the gold is down worldwide, they're expecting ninety percent of the graduates to graduate this year to actually stay in Southern Arizona working in compromise, rather than leaving town to work in the old mines. That's a good industry, those are jobs and benefits. And you know what, ladies and gentlemen, some of our best teachers and lawyers and teachers in Tucson are there because someone previous to their generation used their back in a mine so that their kids could use their brain, generally. The middle class in Southern Arizona was built on the mining industry. We should not shun it. We should not shun it. And the last message I saw from Karen Willock, talked about the mine becoming, that experts agree that it's going to be a toxic waste dump. There are five hundred studies on this mine, they're online, you can look at them. There's no evidence, there's no reputable scientist that will support that claim. That mine is in a lime-based formation. You know what, it's lime, it's a Tom's tablet. That water will be perfectly engaged, balanced to the water around it, that, I mean, that's what the science says. So it's just a shame that as citizens, we've got leaders who say those kinds of things. The best momma, she's never toured the mine, she's never seen the mine. Short answer to your question is yes.
And I've been on the mine tour myself too, and yeah, it's, they've done a lot to make things right. I mean, it looks really good from an engineering standpoint.
Well, they've jumped through every hoop they could possibly jump through. I mean, you know, it's, it's a, beyond me that it has an open gap.
Coming back to Mike's point, they're investing, their parent company is investing twenty million dollars. This is cash, just some money that's going in the ground right now to extend that CAP connection down to Sarita, so the community water company in Green Valley can start taking advantage of their allocation of CAP off water, which they haven't been able to draw it down because they can't, you can't get there from here. And that's part of the decision that Mike's talking about with the, with the mayor and council. The mine is not beholden to comply with the dark skies ordinance. And coming back to your question about industries, wow, optics and the related industries, we've got it going here in Tucson. I think we're the second highest concentration of those sorts of things on the planet, we should be developing that. So I support the dark skies ordinance. Rosemont was not beholden, but by law, they don't have to comply with that ordinance, they're doing so voluntarily. And by using technology, they are actually not only beating the standards, but exceeding the standards. And I believe that some of the other mines are looking at how Rosemont is using the focused LED technology to convert their mines as well. They're doing that because they want to be good neighbors.
Okay, so there's fifty to sixty people in this room who now know this. When Ronstadt left Tucson because she bought a house in the mine with the, the Air Force Base, my grandson in California knew about it, okay? The whole country knew about it. So fifty or sixty people here know this, why don't we find a Ronstadt? Who's big name, big mouth, and talks up Tucson's what it means? See, this is, first of all, I can't go through you because I'm Grand Canyon, okay? But I wanted to know what was going on. I get the newspaper, I read all the news I can, I even listen to the radio news, but I don't know any of this. It doesn't matter that I can't go through you personally, it only matters that nobody else knows this either. So the message, that we know that the newspaper is liberal, not liberal, but it's beyond. And, but this message doesn't come out. So I really think you're in sale because they did their news out in the newspaper. No, I'm serious, I don't want that, that's not what I want. But we, I mean, if my grandson in Eureka, California, Northern California, he's thirty-some years old, knew, knew about, what is her name, Vinda? Was it? Not Ronstadt. She carried on awful because she bought a house, now like you said, you know where your mine is. I mean, it was really dumb. And she'd end up here constantly complaining about the noise, the this, the that, she wanted to get rid of the base and all this nonsense. Does anybody here remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So where's our Republican mouth?
We need to fight, we need to stand up and fight. And, and that's one of the things I've been telling people is that I'm not afraid to stand up to the small groups and say, we don't want this. And I'll make noise.
But where's your big mouth? I mean, where's our star? Who's going to help you?
We, we start talking to people, we're, we're the big mouth, the community. We have to get together and start voicing our opinions. And it has to be made out, made, made public, like the city council.
You know how Democrats are impressed with stars? Where's our star? Are we not impressed with stars?
We're the stars, you're the stars, you're, you're the Tucson citizens.
I mean, we need someone who can...
She wants Ron Reagan.
I didn't go for him, I was a Democrat then.
I understand what you're saying, but let me, let me suggest this, we, you do what you can with what you've got. And I'm sorry, we're all you've got right now.
You're great!
Everybody can do something. You don't have to live in Tucson to love Tucson, okay? There's people who don't live in Tucson who are investing in my campaign because you know what, they've got nine hundred employees that live in Tucson, and they care about them. They're paying sales taxes in Tucson, they care about them. They're thinking about where to locate their business, and one business person told me, I'm putting in two new stores this year. About a million population in Tucson, I want to access the market, but the city's going to charge me an alarm for the ordinance in case my alarm doesn't go off. And when it does go off, then cops can't, they can't come anyway.
Oh, no. They don't...
So he's putting his businesses across the line in the county, still accessing the Tucson market, we lose that revenue. So what can you do? You can't vote for us, but you can tell your friends to.
Oh, right.
Yeah, and then we, we're also your voice as well, I mean, because a lot of the decisions that the city council makes ends up affecting everybody in the county, it affects people on the reservations. People want jobs. So I mean, we have to start coming together as a community, bottom line, from, from all areas, and we've got to start speaking up about this because, like I said, those things that come into Tucson, it affects the job market, it affects everybody. And we can't, we can't stand for that.
But other than alarm, I don't, I don't know too many people who are known well enough to embarrass the city council into what they should have done already.
I'm not here to embarrass the city council. Look at the data. Tell your neighbors, tell your neighbors to step outside and look around. Tell your neighbors, tell your neighbors to step outside and look around. Is this the city they want for themselves and their family? Get, get us pork, what do you want for my town? What do you want for our town? When I'm standing on the doorstep, whether it's been a Democrat or an independent or Republican, I ask that question, are you happy with the city of Tucson? And I think I only had one person who said, yeah. Uh, I ran away from that house real quick, but in most cases, regardless, the party registration said, no, we can do better. Yes, we can do better, but you've got to get up and vote. Now, I also had one person who agreed with everything I said, was looking at my podcast, said, yep, you're right, yep, you're right, yep, I like your day, yep, you're good. Wait, are you a Republican? Yes, I am. Well, then I can't vote for you. Okay, you know, that's the way the game is played, I get it. But there needs to be more people who care about this community, and care about putting it on the right track, without stars, just guys that want to go to work, um, than there aren't. And unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, this is going to be a low-turnout election. Uh, a lot of folks are going to get that ballot mail on July eighteen, and they're probably going to be inclined just to check a box whether it's a D or an R, and you need to get to them, you need to communicate with them, whether it's on the radio show or writing a letter to the editor, and ask them honestly, look around, is this the city you want? If not, it's time to make a change. It doesn't have to be any more complex than that.
Those neighbors and the businesses around Broadway, from downtown to Country Club, don't like the expansion plans that the, that transportation authority now has for the, uh, for that special Broadway? Eight lanes, bus lanes, sidewalk, a lot of incharter there. What do you think should be the future of that?
I, I, I think it's worth examining. I, in this case, I agree with Steve Kazach about there's, and I don't call my own these figures Jim, but there's at least a couple hundred businesses along there. I went briefly for the, um, the Main Street program, consulting with some of those businesses, so there's a few businesses along there that are going to be hurt by this. I'm just, I'm not convinced that the traffic volumes are going to necessitate, necessitate that kind of construction just yet. I, I'm, I'd be interested in looking at other options for that, particularly for the Broadway corridor.
What would you like to see there?
Well, you know, you can actually improve traffic flow, it's, and I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm just a common sense kind of guy, but I fought forest fires for three summers, I know a little bit about hydraulics, and there's just, I, I parallel the movement of water to the movement of cars. Cars move in cohorts, okay? It takes a while for the four-horse cohort to start up and then get through that intersection. I believe by just improving the intersections, to allow for more cars to pass through that intersection on a minute-by-minute basis, you can improve the traffic flow along the streets. I'm a huge fan of more bus pullouts. I can't tell you how many times I've been stuck there, and I have to say, for seventy thousand dollars, we can get that back all the way. Uh, certainly, we need to look at public transportation. I tell you, one of the things I'm very concerned about, this issue came up with the sidewalks and the bonds and how, oops, we didn't think about that. And by the way, folks need to lose their jobs. I mean, on occasion, if you make, if you're in transportation planning and you whoops, forget about the federal transit rules on sidewalks, I mean, that's a pretty big whoops. Having said that, um, I, you know, I, just coming, the other day, I, you know, I see people, I live on Park Avenue, I see people in wheelchairs trying to make their way in traffic because there's no sidewalks. Um, we need to take some serious looks at, at bicycles and the bike lanes and the sidewalks. I give, you know, I talk about potholes all the time, you know, if you have a bicycle that can drive down Park Avenue, in the bike lane, a major transportation portal to the University of Arizona, there's no sidewalk, which you can't ride on the bike anyway, but in the bike lane, there's a pothole that picks up the whole lane. Your options are sidewalk ticket, cars, death, okay? So, fixing the streets is not just for people to drive cars. I got off the subject there, but look at the intersections, bus pullouts. Oh, we've got to have money to do any of that.
They took money I built on the roads to give to the sidewalk.
They're going to be required under this bond election, the original, the regulations originally sold was, it's just going to be curb-to-curb, because that's what we really need here. No, no landscaping, no sidewalks, okay, yay. Well, it turns out that the federal rules do require you, when you make major transportation infrastructure improvements, you're required to make improvements to the sidewalk with pedestrian options as well. Like I said, that's a big whoops. Now, how much of that twenty million per year that we're spending is going to be taken out for that? I don't know. But the bigger picture is, why do we continue to settle for mediocre in Tucson? The legislature started sweeping the HERF funds. Okay, I don't like it, but that's what they did, that's the reality. The city of Mesa diversified their funding for street maintenance, they're less than fifty percent coming from HERF funds now. The city of Phoenix did the same thing. Our city just kind of grumbled and gnashed their teeth. In two thousand eleven, you know how much we spent out of the general fund to fix our roads in the city of Tucson? Zero dollars, not a dime out of the general fund to fix the roads.
But they built it, probably.
Well...
You know we're going to pay four thousand or seven thousand a year for guys?
I guess that's where I come back to priorities, and this comes back to this gentleman's question. Business speak large, they, yes, taxes and regulations, those all make a difference, but they want to live and work and have their employees live and work and do business in a city that's clean, in a city that's functional. And that does mean roads, and it does mean police, and it does mean good schools, and it does mean a clean environment. Too often, with this, the best thing the city can do for business is take care of their own business, and that hasn't been taken care of.
We have time for one more question, and then we're going to go to closing statements, so...
Yes, uh, I have a comment, and also one question for both of you. Uh, when you were talking about Davis, Martha, Earl, Ben?
Yes, sir.
I believe that Ally Miller this afternoon mentioned that the airports actually started a bowling yard up in Utah.
Yeah. Yeah, she was on the radio, so...
I know, she's the air host.
I was not aware of that, but that's kind of scary.
Yeah.
Very, very scary.
The, uh, the question that I have is, what, what are your feelings or your stand on working with Mexico for a deep water port to have Tucson basically as a distribution point to create jobs not only here, but also south of Tucson?
Well, yeah, um, I've got a good background in logistics, and I'll tell you, um, after my time of dealing with overseas import-export, I think that's a really good deal, working with Mexico on that, because not only is that deep water port going to send up thousands of containers here, but we can also utilize the port in Insonada as well. Because what happens is, when, uh, the port of LA is overs, you know, they're, they're overburdened or they're on strike, they divert all their traffic down to Mexico, and all that traffic has, needs to come somewhere.